Gather tonight as we just listen and learn and ask. I pray oh God you'd give us grace, you'd give us mercy. And most of all, Lord, that you'd give us divine direction and divine wisdom that comes from above. And then, Lord, I pray tonight that we'd all gather something from this that would help us down the road. And we thank you for that. And on top of all that, I thank you for Jesus Christ through whom all things are possible. It's in his name we pray. Amen. If you would stand, we've got Ed Myers here behind me. We're gonna pledge to the flag.
Salute, pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, remain standing. You got, you got, you got the most important flag. Salute, honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you.
I want to say thank you tonight for Representative White coming and being with us, and Mr. Jackson, and all of you. So we're gonna learn some things. Y'all come on in, we'll find you a chair, guys. We'll get you seated somewhere. Got three right here. Mr. White, come on, brother. Help yourself.
Thank y'all. Everybody give themselves a round of applause. How many of y'all are just like me, you was just driving home, minding your own business, and you found out that there was a meeting tonight over here about, you just, they wasn't doing nothing else? Okay, I'm sort of the same way. First of all, I want you to know that myself and of course my staff, we are extremely proud to represent you in the Texas House of Representatives. And we feel your apprehension. We feel your concern. This is something that's been boiling for years in this state. Let me tell you why I'm kind of upset about this. Last session, you sent me to the legislature to vote on so-called tax relief. And that involved this $10,000 increase in the homestead exemption. And then I started getting the calls for various reasons. And that $10,000 increase in the homestead, that additionally you voted for it, has been vaporized by what's going on right now. Now I'm gonna tell you here tonight, I'm not gonna stand up here and make any grandiose promises that by next spring after the legislative session, this is gonna pass and that's gonna pass, and this is gonna end. But what I do know, what needs to happen by the end of tonight, the people who pay the freight, the taxpayers, need to take back control of their government here in Jasper County. And let me tell you something, let me tell you something. You don't even need the, we can make some tweaks, we can change this tax from that tax, but you haven't solved the problem. This form of government was never meant for you to push or pull a lever, whatever you do when you go in for me. Thank you for that. Pull a lever for somebody and go home. This is not an outsourced government. You are the government. If you got a problem with what's going on in the appraisal district, if you have a problem with what's going on in the tax entities, if you have a problem with what's going on in the Texas legislature, you're the boss. Look at the man and the woman in the mirror. So thank you for waking up. We've been talking about this time and time and time again. People have tried to get folks energized and educated. You've had folks in here that have been pounded bam 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 by this stuff. And you still have people out there saying, you know, they just need to get educated. You know, they, you know, they just don't understand. And what's got me so irritated about this, after getting a $10,000 increase in the homestead exemption, well, Representative White, you know, values have been lagging for years and we just gotta do... When is the common man gonna get a break? I served for seven years in the US Army. Seven years. And I served, I served against common, everyday men and women. They deserve a break sometime. Anytime it's time for the regular hard-working man or woman to come and get something, we always got an excuse. Well, you know, gotta clear a clearer. Well, you know, we got a wrong number from this person. Well, you know, this is just lagging. Let me tell you something. And I'm, and I'm, I'm okay. I'm proud to be a conservative. And I'm proud to be a Republican. But I found out this, Dan R., there's a lot of big government going on with Republicans. Let's put it on the table. Put it on the table. You know, everybody wants to talk about President Obama. But what about the big government in Jasper? What about that? Clean your own house up first. See, you don't get very many claps about that, Gary. But sometimes you have to talk, you don't have to throw your team under the bus, but you got to go in the locker room, and right now we're in the locker room. And sometimes you gotta tell the team members in the locker room, they need to butcher and get on board. So you got a lot of big government, not just in DC, so that's good. The Austin politicians, they always want to tell you to watch DC big government. But you got a lot of Austin big government. And you got local governments. And I'm friends with all the local government officials. I look, I like all of them. They're great men and women. But you got big government going there too. Yes, and sometimes the state makes them do big government. Sometimes the Fed makes them do big government. But at the end of the day, you're the government. You're the government. You are the appraisal district. You are the taxing entity. You are the legislature, legislature. You are the Congress. Take your rightful place as free men and free women tonight. Now I don't know what's gonna happen. Go ahead. So here we are here tonight. Y'all looking at me and I'm looking at y'all. What are we going to do? Let me just lay, let me just lay out the lay of the land. Those of y'all that are proud US infantrymen and Marine Corps infantrymen, you know, the first thing you gotta do is you gotta get a situation, the lay of the land. What's going on? Now, y'all in Jasper are in a situation. I think in Newton, have y'all gotten your appraisal notices yet? Okay. Harden, have you got appraisal notices? Okay. So you are in a situation with Jasper. You are almost out of time. We can sit up here tonight and I can make a stirring speech. Politicians are real good at doing that. I can listen to every testimony about my taxes increase, not taxes, my appraisal values increased 9,000%. Mine increased 1,533%. Mine increased, we can listen to all that tonight, and I'll do it because that's what you've elected me to do. But that is not worth a hill of beans right now if you've got your appraisal notice. You've got to use the law. Don't get mad at what these other entities or like the appraisal district, all these, they're doing what they're, they're doing what they're told to do or what they're supposed to do or what they think they're forced to do. Now it's time for you to do what you need to do as property owners. You own the county. You even have to mow your own easement in right of way. I know I have to. So you own it. We don't have time, well, let me see. Time out for listening to you. And I'm gonna listen to them because they're fascinating and they need to be on the record. Because there are people in Austin, there are people in all these offices that just think it's just a fad. It's not a fad. This has been going on over and over and over and over and over. You got to fill the protest form out tonight. Tonight. Don't worry, nobody's gonna, not, nobody's gonna take your job, nobody's gonna look at you crazy. You don't have to worry about that. Won't be any retaliation. But tonight, fill out the protest form. Don't mail it, don't give it to somebody thinking that outsourcing. Can't outsource. You see what happens when you outsource? You get outsourced and aren't you outsourced? Tonight, the protest form, it's got to go in. You have, if you're in Harden, Jefferson, Newton, or any other county in Texas, and you've got one of these notices, by law you have, you must protest. And you have to do it tonight. They got real, real fine print there, so you know, so just do it tonight to turn into tomorrow. Don't wait till the last, you cannot wait until the last day. Things happen between now, I was supposed to be in Austin on, at some conference, dealing with Purple Hole peas. I didn't go because I couldn't trust that something would happen between Austin and here. I stayed here. You need to do the protests. Let me fill in some more information. I have people tell me, you know, the, the comptroller or the comptroller's people come down and force this. There may be some validity to that. I hear all these so-called conspiracies and things to, to do these, do this. But this is what I do now. The property tax, fill you in. Yes, we have a statewide property tax code for obvious reasons. We couldn't have 254 property tax laws for every county. Could you imagine this? Times 254? So we got one. But the property tax starts with a, that, with a, with an assessment, value assessment process that begins here in your county, which, which you call a county appraisal district. Those people are not hired by the comptroller. They're not appointed by the legislature. They're hired by people, your, your elected officials here or the board members here. And some of them are here tonight. I see some of their faces. Your taxing entity, entities, school board, cities, counties, all local. You vote for them. They stand for election just like I do. They appoint members to the board of the directors of the appraisal district. These are people you go to church with, I guess. They're people you see in Walmart, I hope. They're people who own properties to the left and the right and across the river and all of that. I figure none of these people serve in Austin. No one from Austin, I guess, calls them. This is all locally generated. Hopefully we won't get much into the tax rate because that is a totally different situation. That is set by your tax entities after they set their budgets. And you multiply the rate times the valuation, you get all the tax monies that are supposed to come in. No, except for the property tax equalization fund, and that's not a lot of money. For the most part, property taxes are assessed locally, collected locally, budgeted locally, and spent locally. State Representative White does not appropriate, because I'm not on the commissioner's court, I'm not on the city council, I'm not on a water district or what you call it, hospital board. I don't appropriate property taxes. The local governing entities should be standing here. They set the rate. They set the rate. Now I understand that, well, the legislature's passed this, the legislature's done this. Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll take responsibility for the pain that I may cause. And when I identify it, fix it, I tried to with a $10,000 increase in the homestead exemption. But your local governing officials set the rate. They appoint the members. Then the members of the board go out and get the appraisal review board people. They're all people here in Jasper. They're all people in Harden. You should be talking to them in the deacons board room between prayer meetings. You should be talking to them at the little league football, baseball, basketball, little dribblers, hoopers, or whatever you call them. You should be talking to them in the American Legion. Yes, round me up on something. But why isn't the city councilman, the mayor, the judge, the commissioner, why aren't they here? You know, this is what I know. This is what I do know. This is what I do know. If there's something I can do about it, I will do about it if it's common sense, if it's right and it's conservative. Okay, we're not gonna do a whole bunch of liberal stuff. Okay, put that out there. But I will tell you this. You need to go talk to your tax entities. I'm just putting, I'm just putting it where it needs to be. Because this is literally out of control. And I want you to know, Lieutenant Governor Patrick, who made tax relief a signature piece of his legislative program last session, he is livid. He is livid. Every session, your state senator, Senator Nichols, files appraisal cap legislation over and over and over again. And finally, when we get just a little piece, just a 10,000 little piece increase in the exemption and a couple of hundred dollars in what you call this, in property tax relief, is vaporized in less than a year. Why? Because we the people, including James White, I'm we the people. We the people sit. We become demoralized. I think honestly, I'm all for the Republicans. I hope they all, I hope they win. All from DC to whatever. James White, party chairman, Republican, need to stop watching DC sometime and watch Austin, Jasper, Coons, and Newton. Just because it's five people or seven people doesn't mean it's small government. I've seen a lot of big government go on with seven people or five people or four people. I've seen a lot of big government go on. And, and look, that's not criticizing them because you're in charge or supposed to be. So you got to do the protests. Thank you for your Facebook posts. 35,000, 40,000 seen and hits, all fine. But it's not worth a hill of beans if you're not gonna step up Pastor Lewis, your rightful place as a man and say, "I worked hard to build this for my family. I want to leave this to my son or my daughters where they will have a head start on their local prosperity, their family prosperity." Let's just put it like this, if you don't do the protests, if you don't use the law that's given to you, you ought to just walk off your property and give it to the state. Give it to the state. Give it to Marvin. Give it to Ray Lewis. They'll take it. Give it to Ms. Dr. Sessions. They'll take it. You ought to just walk off because it doesn't make any sense for you to work. I'm looking at people in here, they're gray hair, they're fault for this country. They're, they're paid off, they land. And this doesn't make any sense that you got to come all the way up here to be treated with some dignity. So yeah, I'm mad, but I'm mad at us because we let it go on. So you gotta protest and you gotta stay firm. And then you need to call your county commissioners, need to call your county judges. You need to call your city council, you need to call your mayor, you call me too. And you say, "We need..." Something don't sound right. I don't care what they say, 30% lag in property values, and I get a call, somebody got a 9,000% increase in the valuation? I'm, I'm just thinking, I'm, I'm, let's say I'm working in the CAD and I'm, I'm, I'm typing in the numbers and I see 9,000. I'm thinking, man, let me go back and, no, they sent it. Tonight, we have some people that have some information for you. We had this situation, start making your way up here, Ron. We had, uh, we had a situation. I'm, I'm reading, I'm reading, I'm getting calls from Texas Forestry Association, landowners. And you know how you ride through and you see these big old, all these trees and you see a bowling alley? Pipeline, power line. This man calls me, I'm on, I'm on the dais at a mental health committee hearing. And I thought I was going crazy. I'm supposed to be solving the mental health and I'm thinking I'm going crazy on mental health. Tax appraiser, the, 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 excuse me, not tax appraiser, the, the, the chief appraisers were considering picking up the easements that have been taken from you by the pipelines and the power lines and putting them, taking that out of, taking that little, that, that, out of timber valuation to market value. This is what we call a rigged system. You can't win. It's like going to the casino. You have a, a better chance going down there to the Indian casino. This one is rigged. And I'm like, what, what, wait a minute, where did that come from? That's a new one. That's a, I'm, I'm going through books, I'm going through rules. Says timber track of land, timber track. And talk about taking this out, putting this over here, taking this out. And I talked with a appraiser again today. He said, you know, I shouldn't, I shouldn't, I shouldn't have put that out there. I said, "You shouldn't have. It was none of your business. Should have kept your hands off of it." So Ron is gonna come up and he's gonna give some, some insight real quick on that. Then we're gonna bring some other people up that have some of that more, they ain't gonna take long like me. Some more detailed technical information on how to attack this protest. I know I got a lot of real estate people out there, they're experts. We want to listen to y'all and we'll listen to your testimony. 1,533%, 72%, all of that, okay? But you gotta protest. You gotta do your job as a man and woman in a free country. Here you go, Ron.
I think I just been set up. You can't follow that. But I do work side by side with, with Representative White. He, he represents y'all very, very well. But we started getting the phone calls. I mean, it's not just here in Jasper County. It's all through East Texas as people get their, their timber valuations in the mail. And it goes beyond what he's saying, the timber valuation. It's how they're gonna tax that land. If you've got improvements on it, or, and we need to stop that. Like Representative White said, you know, if, if they're gonna try to charge market value on, on power lines, the land under power lines, that land's worthless. I represent the Texas Forestry Association. I'm the executive director. We've got about 3,000 members. And we actually have a piece of property that was given to the association. And, and the income we get off that goes back into our education fund. But there's 22 acres and they put a power line crossed it. We don't get any annual income off that. And if they're gonna tax that at market value, there's no way we can keep that land. That land's worthless really. It serves as a fire break, you know, transportation up and down it. But it's part of that timber valuation, part of that track. Because we got timber on both sides of it. It wasn't our choice to put that power line down there, put the metal there. So that one really got our hackles. And, and we've got to, we gotta stand up and we gotta fight that. You know, if the appraisal district wants to value that at market value, you gotta protest that. We gotta stop that now. Because the timber tax manual, I think it's very clear that they can't do it. And then we've got to do a better job also of getting our price reportings in when they collect that data. And we've already started that process. So there's a lot of flexibility in that manual. I've looked at it over the years and I thought that it was a golden rule, that manual. But the appraisal districts got the ability to, to look and survey management costs, timber prices, and, and they got the ability to make some adjustments in there. It's not a hard, you know, hard-clad directive out of the comptroller's office. There is some flexibility for these appraisal districts and, and you need to push for that. So that's all I've got. I didn't come here with a, a big long program, but we've, we're working with Texas Forest Service and, and we're gonna try to get more information out to our, our members and, and try to make sure we got the right numbers. So we're gonna start that right now. Yeah. Yeah, I'm Ron Hufford, executive vice, our executive director of the Texas Forestry Association. All right?
Good, thank you. Any, oh, we have another question for you.
And for years I have wondered, is it possible to find out how much taxes the timber companies pay to Newton, Texas? I have asked that question, I have asked it, I have asked it. I don't think they're toting their load if you really want to know the truth. As far as I'm concerned, they can take their trees and move them.
Okay, let me, let me address that, okay? Let me address that. Thank you for your question because it's important that everybody totes their fair share. But now, could I, could I tell you the rest of the story? Because this is one thing we don't want to get into. That's what the taxing entities from local, the state, and national want y'all to get into is pointing fingers at each other about, hold on now, about revenue. That's what you, that's what they want you to do. Because if you're pointing, if you're pointing at each other, you're not pointing at the legislature. You're not pointing at your, at your commissioner's court. You're not pointing at the people who've done this. Now, before I was elected, various stakeholders from forestry, your local governing, all these people, okay? They got together and understood that timber production is a crop such as agriculture. And where the life of a, you know, wheat seed is what? I don't know if anybody's grown wheat, you know, a couple, a few months, a tree may be a number of years. And so it was the idea that you, you made consideration for that, okay? But let me tell you. How does that impact the appraisal value increases? Because I'm, I'm not talking about the tax rate, I'm talking about the appraised value. Your appraised value should be based on the market value of property such as yours in your county. Not trees, not wheat, not cows. Go ahead.
Do they ever get an appraisal increase?
Absolutely, yes. By law, yes. By law, yes. So for example, let's say if they have a structure on it, okay? In the middle of the timber, you know, that is appraised, okay? Now, depending on what that structure is used for, it's appraised as such. Yes, sir. Um, if, if you look at the code... Um, if, if you look at the code, a few years ago, the, uh, again, sitting, sitting with the same stakeholders around the table, they understood that it was beneficial, okay? Uh, because I've read into this, that certain agricultural properties per se can be used for what we call wildlife management use, okay? Now, here's the catch. If they have a hunting lodge, okay, there, that hunting lodge is appraised, all right? Okay? So, again, my friend, and I know your concerns, I hear those concerns a lot, but that's what the politicians will tell you to do. Well, I don't know why you're mad at me, you need to go talk to him, because he's not paying his fair share. See, they, see, their value is this. Well, the reason why is, when you put a, a tree, a little bitty tree in the ground, you can't cut it and put it on one of them trucks the first day. So they give that consideration to it, all right? And once it's grown, then they have a full value for that, for that plot. So that's why these things are done. Um, and with the, also with the, with the understanding that they're industries, how would you say it, upstream, I guess, that are also dependent upon that crop. But again, that has no, that's, that's, that's a tax rate issue that we can have another town hall about with your tax entities and me, since I do that legislation. The deal here tonight, and you've been getting these extra normal valuations over and over for years, before that legislation was even enacted.
All right, he answer your question? But, but everybody's getting that same notice, uh, large and small landowners, they are. And it's how you, and, and some folks have the ability to go down, or, or actually, like Representative White said, have taken action, gone down and protested. You've got to go down and protest. But everybody, if you've got it in timber, and you gotta apply for that, then, uh, you're gonna get your, your notice, just like, like your neighbor, whether you're large or small. Paul?
In Newton County, where most of my property is at, uh, seventy-six acres jumped from a hundred and forty to a hundred and ninety-four thousand. And, uh, what I'm saying, they keep telling you, well, you're not taxed on that, that's just market value. But I'm seventy-nine years old, face to have open hearts, and I got three daughters probably going on it. If they convert it to something else, they gonna pay five years back on that hundred and ninety-four thousand. So I complained, they dropped it back, they, they raised it from eighteen, uh, hundred an acre to twenty-five fifty. And it's timberland.
Why, why are they doing it? I missed that point as far as the, uh, going to market value.
Well, they put market value plus the productivity value. And they always tell you, well, market value, you shouldn't be concerned about that.
Oh, I see what you're saying. They're, they're showing the market value, but you're getting your timber valuation. Yeah.
Yeah, it, it's raised too.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, market value counts.
Mm-hmm, yes, it does.
Because we may not have this timber value forever if this government gets screwed up much more.
Yeah.
And so, that's what scares me.
All right.
Okay. Hey, he's gonna say one more note, and he's come to.
And, and the other thing that I find out, is a lot of landowners have never taken the opportunity to go down and, and, uh, and, and visit with the appraisal district and request timber valuation or ag value. There's still a lot of people out there that are paying market value, and as these rates go up, they, they don't realize that. I, several years ago, I had a lady come into the office, and, and she was just beside herself, and I looked at her and says, have you ever gone down and, and asked for timber productivity? She said, no. She, she was completely clueless, and she's been paying that market value. There are things that, that you gotta, you gotta go into the appraisal office and ask for it, and then if you don't like the appraisal, then you gotta go protest.
What you paid for your, what you paid for your property is private, that's between you and whoever you bought it from. I got ahold of the appraisal district, I have protested already, and they came back and made an offer to me, and I refused it. I'm gonna take my hearing. Okay? Here's, here's the catcher, that they're praising off of the appraised value. You understand what I'm saying? Not off of what you paid for it, or what you think it's worth, but what they have praised it for years ago, and then they're looking at what's sold, and saying, well, this property's sold, and it appraised for this much value, so therefore, we're gonna increase it, but they don't really know what it's sold for, okay? So it's up to you to let them know what it's sold for, what you think it's worth, okay?
All right, good point. Uh, and, and with that, uh, we see some hand, a hand back there, we'll get... Okay, okay, right, okay. The reason I went ahead and let Ron do, since Ron was up here, and he won't be popping back and forth, but why don't we do this? We're gonna get into the, um, what the open discussion part, um, and I guess we'll just do that right now, we'll take some questions and answers, but as we transition into that, to put everything in context, could I, could I have this gentleman come up, and in a more, not overly technical, just tell us what we gotta do? Just gotta tack the heel, all right? Um, talk about the protest process, and then I think that'll kick us into open discussion and other, other questions, okay?
Good evening. My name is Robert Jackson. My life has been interesting over the last ten days or so. I received an email late one afternoon, and someone said, hey, come to a meeting. Said, uh, what's it about? Taxes? Said, I don't know, I really don't have time to go talk about taxes. And then friend came by a few days later at the office and said, we're having a meeting, why don't you come join us? Said, well, tell me a little bit more about it, he did, and had another friend come by another day, and then another email, and lo and behold, I ended up at a meeting a few days ago, and we started talking about, uh, property taxes, taxes for Texans, and whether we should have sales tax increase, do away with property tax, whether we should have an income tax, there's a lot of things that are out there, and everybody had their own personal opinions on what would be right, and, and nobody's right or wrong on those. Depends on if your ox is getting gored, you know, you may not have a lot of income, but you may have a lot of timber, you may have a lot of timber and not a lot of income, so depending upon the income tax, or property tax, or sales tax, or, or some combination of that. And that's something probably from a long-term perspective, there needs to be discussion, and there needs to be discussion among yourselves, your neighbors, and with Representative White. And that's going to be going on in the legislature this coming session, I feel certain. And then we talked about maybe more of an intermediate need, what's gonna, what would happen, you know, uh, at the legislative session? They only meet once every two years, some things need to be done quickly. And so we began to think through the appraisal district process, and the one question I'd ask for you is, until you began, maybe even came to the meeting tonight, did any of you know how the appraisal district was put together, and who ran? Do you have a general idea? Show of hands? Probably don't. A deeper question is, do you even know who the board of directors of the appraisal district are? You do not. So it became apparent from a taxpayer standpoint, one of the things that we've asked Representative White to at least consider when he goes to the legislative session, is to consider a direct election of the managers of the Jasper County Appraisal District and every other county appraisal district, so that you know who they are, and you have some ability to go express your opinions to them from time to time, certainly in this kind of situation Right now, the tax entities are able by their votes to determine who is on that board of directors. Probably when the Pivoto bill came into being back in the eighties, it was conceived by the legislature that there would be enough political pressure on the tax entities that they would be able to keep the appraisal district in line, because it was to their advantage to keep their constituents happy, because Texas has always been a low-tax state. But it seems like the other side of the coin has now risen, where there's a relationship that's developed between the tax entities and the appraisal districts, such that the ever-increasing need for revenue comes from the increase in value of taxes. That's the way, they can say the tax rate stayed the same, but if you look at the increase in taxes from one year to the next, it's gone up several million dollars. And the only way that happens is because of the increase in value. And so, by having a direct relationship with those managers or the board of directors, and having a term limit, so you're in a position to have fresh eyes every three, four, or five years on the process, you're putting yourself in a position where no one is in a position for them to benefit themselves unduly in that situation. And that may not be occurring, but the perception becomes reality in these circumstances, and that's what you try to avoid. The appearance of impropriety sometimes has a greater impact than the actual impropriety itself, and you wanna avoid that. So there's some things that the legislature can do in six months that are being considered. But then you get immediate term. What can be done now? I've got six days to do something that's gonna affect my life income-wise dramatically over the next twelve to twenty-four months. What can I do? You've already heard, fill out the protest form and get it filed. Just to show a hands, have any of you ever been through the review process where you actually go in front of the review board and they vote on it? A fair number, but the vast majority have, have not gone through that process. You need to consider doing that. One, the review board will get a impact on how serious this situation is to you. Secondly, you need to, you need to get rid of the, sir? I'm sorry, I'll hold it up higher. Secondly, you need to get rid of the fear of going in front of the review board. You'll walk in there, and you think you're in Star Wars. You'll see where your tax money has been at work, because they'll have screens up, and they'll have pictures, they'll have satellite photos of your property looking down, they'll have properties of your exterior. He's like, how do I defeat that? By common sense. You find properties that are similar to yours that have been sold within the last three to four years, and determine those values in relationship to yours. The fact that your air conditioning system is having some problems, you may want, wanna tell the world about it, but telling the appraisal district about it is important. The fact that you haven't repaired one of the leaks from one of the hurricanes, may, you just have a bucket catching, collecting the water, is important to tell them. The fact that your stairs or your carpet are in disarray and need to be repaired, or you have other kind of, uh, termite damage, or anything like that, all of that comes into play. The age of your house comes into play with regard to determining its value. So each of you are in a position to know that about your own respective properties, and you wanna look at that in relationship to its current value. Another thing you need to be aware of is, obviously, in the south end of Jasper County, there's been a lot of growth. Up around the lakes area in Jasper County, there's been a lot of growth. But in the interior of the county, particularly in the city of Jasper, there's actually a reduction in value of some of the properties based upon current sales. You need to know that and find that out. The appraisal district is not gonna tell you about that, they're going to ignore those. You're gonna have to look, you're gonna have to talk with your neighbors, you're gonna have to go around and see the for sale signs, Century Twenty-One, or Almond Company, or Rayburn Realty, or Keller Williams. Look at each of these different signs, see what's being sold, see who's moved in. Your neighbors may or may not be willing to talk to you about those, but look at the newspapers, see what the prices are there, uh, go on the internets, uh, look at the for sale homes prices there. Get a feel for what those are selling for, and what they've got yours appraised for. Check your square footage, your square footage is very important. If you've got a fifty-year-old house, that's important in relationship to it being a ten-year-old house. All of those have factors that become very important. You bring your packet, and the law is, is that the appraisal district has an obligation to furnish you the information that they're going to use against you in your proceeding. And, and you think about that for a minute. You pay the taxes to provide their salaries and their equipment, and they've spent months preparing this plan for the increase in your taxes, and you get the notice, and you got thirty days. How does that happen? So one of the individuals at our meeting said, you know, really what needs to happen here, and he was trying to convince Representative White of that, is that we really need to do this in a year in advance, so that we're not picking values and having to make determinations in June and July of this year for a tax rate that goes into, and values that go into effect three months from now. It should be a year and three months from now, so that there's adequate time for you to not only fight them, but you, for you to raise up enough information among yourselves to be able to present good information to the board.
We see a, a mic, we'll, we'll get down to you, we see a mic right there.
Yes, sir, I have so many questions, I don't know if I have time to ask, I'll, I'll give other people time.
Yes, ma'am.
But one thing is, what if we've already gone up there, like, four times to the tax assessor? And by the fourth time, we're worn down, and we sign the paper, saying that we agree to the taxes that they're gonna put on us? We're, my husband is eighty-two, I'm seventy-five. It was supposed to have been fixed when we were sixty-five. Is that not true?
Okay, what do you mean by fixed?
Our taxes were supposed to be closed.
Frozen, okay, okay.
At sixty-five. Well, now, they wanna raise it, unbelievable, unbelievable, from what it was.
Okay, this is, this is what we need to do. Are there...
And we have taxation without representation.
Okay.
I wanna know why in eighty, well, I'd say eighty-four, they raided our road, we had free access to the garbage, you'd, I mean, there was just all kind of, well, now, all of a sudden, not all of a sudden, but through the years, we're not, we don't have anything, we're not represented by anything.
Okay, okay, and, uh, thank you to your husband, great hat there, make America great again.
He's a, he's a veteran.
Um, I, I think someone is taking notes. Let, let's get this lady's name and address, because we got an issue here. Let's get this lady's name and address, because we got an issue here. If she is over 65 and over, she is supposed to get an exemption that her and her husband, you're supposed to have that frozen. If that's not it, we gotta get that fixed first, okay? We gotta fix that. And on the issue of, um, on the issue of, on the issue of... Okay, let me finish this here. And what we're gonna do is, we're gonna get the questions as the microphone comes around, so people can hear it. So we'll get a microphone back there to you. And the issue here about going over, back and over and over and over again, you've got a structural issue on getting with your local taxing entities to get people on these boards that are responsive. But ma'am, I don't think you have an option but to go back.
We didn't want to, but we did sign the papers. Can we still go before that review board, or can we just... Are we obligated to that now?
It depends. Look, let's get your name, and we want to get to you specifically. Get some, um... Do we have anybody going around, getting her name and contact information? And we want to get back with her. Email address, cell phone, all that. Satellite, downlink, Google, all that, okay? How many microphones do we have? Okay, could we get one on this side working up? And stop right there with him in the green shirt on the way back there. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. I asked that question about the taxes being frozen at 65 because I did turn 65 last year, and they told me my taxes would not go up again. But when I got the notice, they were sky-high. So I went in to ask that question. I said, "You told me last year that these taxes were supposed to be frozen." Well, yes, ma'am, but you see, some property does go up in value. And when it does, although you were 65, your taxes will increase. Not a whole lot, but they will increase. That's what I was told here in Jasper County.
Okay, uh, there's a nice lady with a pad. That's a real, that's a personal individual. We want to get your information, so we can try to get you in the right spot. Yes, sir?
I don't mean to holler at the floor, but I was in a meeting today in Coons. And a guy from Liberty, his property jumped to $5,500 an acre. He went to protest it. And he asked, "How did y'all find this? Where did y'all get this?" And they said, "Well, any property that touches Highway 146, we just stepped it." And he said, "Well, what property did y'all use?" So he asked for the paper. They said they wasn't gonna give it. He said, "I gotta write for it." So after 15 minutes, they gave him. He looked at it, and most of them was one acre, two acres, you know, which was sale-high, or just a house or something. But he's got a horse farm, you know, 200 acres. And they jacked his farm up to $5,400 an acre. But he's got the paper now to compare all those entities. They gotta give it to you. They didn't want to, but he showed it to me. So tell them I want to see what y'all compared mine to, okay?
Thank you. And my mic right here, there's somebody right behind you, but we need to start getting to the back and around and over on that side too.
I got one right here.
Right here, yes. And we need to get over there too, yes.
I don't have a question, but my thing is, I think people need to be aware that if they do an appraisal of, and you're talking to your square footage, that type of thing. I'm sorry if you can't hear me. But be sure you know the square footage of your home or your property, because I've had it to where the appraisal come out, and she did like this from the end of my house to foot out. And I was like, "What? That's... No. My house doesn't go out that far." She started laughing. It was a laughing matter. It was a joke. I went through heck fighting that. I finally gave up, okay, after several months of fighting. The fact that she over-measured my home, okay, footage-wise, okay? I gave up on it. And if she's here now, she knows who she is that did that, because it was a big joke. Sorry. Anyway, and then the other issues is, I've fought, you know, the county year after year as far as the appraisal increasing, increasing, increasing. And I don't live within city limits. I don't have city conveniences. And I have cracked slab and a lot of different things. It's an old home from the late 70s, early 80s. But the issue that I came up with was, I finally asked one of the ladies up there Freedom of Information for copies of several of the people that worked within the county appraisal district, their information on their property taxes. And she goes, "Oh, well, you don't..." And I said, "No, Freedom of Information." Well, she printed it. Well, oh, I'm sorry. So I started looking into it. Well, then, one time when I went in, and I was, you know, arguing the point, and I asked, I said, "What's this one little code right here?" I said, "Everyone that works in the appraisal district that I had, not everybody, but everybody that I had, has that little code. And their taxes are cheaper than mine. They're within the city limits. They have like a big, huge, expensive home compared to mine, and their taxes are cheaper." And I thought that's a church code.
Okay, so the important thing, I know this sounds, it can sound very overwhelming. I think you know your property, but you're gonna have to probably know it really well, okay? Because apparently, they've got all this equipment in these hearings. You've got to know your property. Okay, who else we have here?
Right here.
Okay, we need to get a mic over there. Can we get a mic over here? Go ahead, Marvin.
James, the thing that I'd like to point out is, I've been in business 36 years in Spurger. We, in the late 80s, we got the new tax on inventory and furniture and fixtures in our businesses. And that started hammering us pretty hard. And now, we also have, besides the property tax, we also are running into the great, great tax that y'all put on us, what, three years ago? The franchise tax, okay?
Six years ago. I didn't vote on that. I wanted to make...
Okay, okay.
Before I was... But I think it was 10 years ago, in the middle of the last decade after the school finance last...
The problem is, the problem is, is the tax, the amount of tax money that is being spent, period.
Okay.
If our government, if our state government will quit spending the money, you won't have to go up on us. I was in Beaumont today and made a U-turn under one of the freeways. Beautiful. And there's a little sign there that says, "This was done as a beautification project only." How much money did we spend in Beaumont beautifying the underpass?
Probably a lot, hey. Probably a lot.
And the last thing I would like to say is, if you go to the appraisal board and you sit down and you go through the process and the board turns you down, where do you go from there? Because I'm like Mr. Paul Pope. We sit down there and talk to them, and after it was over, it's over.
It's over. There is another step. It's called the district court. And I believe you've got to put up a few hundred dollars?
Uh-huh.
Okay. But yeah, you can go to arbitration.
It gets out of control. You're not going to win it. It's not going to be won.
Okay, but Marvin, okay, I understand that. And those are some things we can look at legislatively. But what I have to tell people, now, Tyler County, you and I share the same county. We're a little different right now. They haven't really mailed the notices. Hopefully, your calls to your elected officials is slowing some of this down and getting it reasonable. But I have to tell people, the first step is you got to protest. I'm... Well, go ahead.
The only thing else I can say is not one penny more. Not one penny.
Okay.
It's, we are taxed as much as we can stand as a people.
I agree. Yes.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'm like two of the other ladies. I will be 70, my birthday, and I had my taxes frozen, whatever, when I turned 65, and they went up considerably.
Okay, can I have someone take your name, and we'll get back with you?
Absolutely.
Over here.
Yes, sir. I think I read that there were around 20,000... I'm sorry. I read there's around 20,000 of these taxes sent out, okay? And my question is, you know, I think we're already pushing the 30-day limit to protest. I don't know how many appraisal boards there are, but are they considering how they're going to accommodate if probably more than half these people decide that they want to protest and meet with them? And are they gonna realize that they may have to extend their 30 days to take care of these protesters?
This is what I would say to that. You do your job and file the protest, and they'll work that out. Say, "Okay, well, let me get you with a mic, okay, so I can hear you." Where's the mic? We got a mic over here somewhere? I've got Miss Job over here. Yes, sir?
Okay, I go in the appraisal district pretty often. I own some property. The first thing, when you go in there, I'm by myself. It ain't all of us. They pick you off. They tell you what Austin says, or they tell you what legislative says. You got a problem with an appraisal on a house? "Oh, it's 100 years old. It's got cracks in it." You can tell them about it. But it's not put to you that it's taxed at that rate. It's replacement value, okay? They're talking out the side of their mouth. It don't do any good for me to go in there by myself. I have done some good. Don't get me wrong. I've had some victories. But I'm losing the war, and the rest of these people are too. You're just one person, and you're at their mercy.
James?
Where am I?
Right here.
Okay.
Look down, down, James. James?
I get you.
James. Hey, hey, James.
Okay. Well, this guy has a mic too.
Okay, okay. In Hardin County, we had a wonderful appraisal district about eight years ago. A wonderful appraisal district. We, what they told me, we failed two years in a row. We failed from Texas, which I guess are Susan Combs or whoever.
Comptroller.
Okay, come from the comptroller. Okay, until then, we made it. We were in good shape. But because they took care of everybody, or they did it at the value they thought that it should be at. Okay, they come down and audited us, and they says, "You failed."
When?
This was four years ago, I think.
Four years ago.
Four years ago, okay. "You failed, Hardin County. Okay, you better get this right, or, you know, we're gonna come back." They come back the next year and said, "You failed." Okay, now, they tried to explain to me, after you failed two years in a row, that your school district, something's frozen. Does somebody know that answer?
Well, this is what happens. The comptroller actually applies the values that they have come up with, and those replace the values. But let me ask you this question. Because I looked in Hardin County too. I don't think I had one school district that failed the property value study.
This was years ago now.
Okay, I'm talking about years ago, but let's talk about now, for a reason. Not because... The reason I say, "Let's talk about that now." Look and see if your school district principally, and then all of the school districts in your county, and I can send you the link to it, did they pass the property value study? And I will tell you...